And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if I could begin by getting a motion to accept today's agenda.
So moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Oh, I think it was Catherine who did the motion and Maria who seconded it.
Do we go right into 2.1 now?
I think we jump right into 2.1. Good evening, everyone. I have to say that that was the most vocal pledge of allegiance I think we've ever had at a Board of Education meeting.
They practice it every day.
So this time every year, we always stop to try to take a few minutes to acknowledge the Board of Education for their time and commitment and leadership in the school district. And, you know, it's easy for folks that aren't engaged in this line of work to make some assumptions about the commitment and obligation that all of you hold. And it's not coming to two meetings a month. There's many, many other meetings occur. There's the role and responsibility that you assume in representing the school district as well as you do. There's, you know, certainly committee meetings. There's lots and lots of homework for you to do and reading all the materials to make wise and informed decisions. So tonight, we always stop to allow a representative group from our community to come forward and to share their words of thanks and appreciation to you. And there's a whole bunch of folks, and with the room being so crowded, normally I can just look out and find everybody. But I know our fine mayor, Mr. Smith, is here this evening, and I'd like to invite you in to say a few words first, if you could.
Well, I think first I want to say what's really changed about Board of Ed Week this year is that, you know, the union support is unbelievable this year. So thank you very much for your continued support of the Board of Ed. It's always, you know, special for me as an alumnus, as a parent, as the mayor, to come thank all of you because there really is no more thankless job. And I know a lot of crappy volunteer jobs at the village, and this is the worst.
Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And somehow, they always get people to run for it. My job's easy, and no one ever runs. But it is really a thankless job. It is a ton of, you know, to me, it's such a unique set of skills that no one has. And then we get people that are very qualified to do it. So it's really amazing. But we really, really appreciate all the hours, the stress, the, you know, kind of the amount of influence you have over both our children and our pocketbooks is enormous. And we appreciate how seriously you take all of it. You know, so I'm just going to quickly read my proclamation because I know everyone looks forward to that every year. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas the men and women serving as members of the school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. And whereas the members of New York's local school boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve, and in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Smith, serving as the Mayor of the Village of Irvington, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to 27th, 2017, as School Board Recognition Week. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Brian, and we appreciate all of your support and of course, that of the village. So thank you. So Amy, would you like to come up and say what a few folks are here to say?
So hi, I'm Amy Falk, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Irvington Faculty Association, some of whom are here to support me tonight. Obviously, the Irvington Faculty Association is the teachers' union here in Irvington. And this being the occasion to recognize your good work, I want to start by offering my very, very sincere and profound thanks for the very, very hard work that you do in support of this fine institution that we've committed our professional lives to. We recognize that the countless hours that you put into this thankless job are in service of our kids, who we love and who we serve every day also. So we truly and sincerely are very thankful for all that you do. We obviously have a vested interest in how this district is run, and we're grateful for all the work that you do to make it what it is. Yet, even though our interests are aligned in so many important ways, we find ourselves wondering whether you have a complete understanding of what's going on with us at this point in time. And, you know, Michael, your words on opening day were really touching and very sincere, I thought, in the way that they were delivered. We recognize that this is a difficult position that you're in, and yet, you know, we hope that you also recognize how we're struggling. It's very difficult to come to work every day and feel unheard and feel like the concerns that we have are frustrated by a drawn-out process. And as you are aware, but I'm not sure if everyone is necessarily aware, all the conversations at the bargaining table have been through intermediaries, largely administration, but also district lawyers. And we think that it would be helpful if we would have the opportunity to have you hear directly from us. And for that matter, to hear directly from you also. Because we're stuck feeling like maybe there's not a complete understanding on both sides of why we seem to be at this state of affairs. And we're hopeful that in so doing, we can put this behind us and focus our energies and our attention on things that really matter. You see us at the flagpole and on the steps, and you see us here, you know, to try to make sure that you understand how important this is to us, as opposed to being home with our families or planning lessons or grading papers. And we think that if we're able to come to a fair settlement, that we can put our efforts where they belong, which is to give these kids world-class education, just as they deserve. So thank you. Thank you for hearing me out. Thank you for all the work that you do. And I have cards for everybody with my phone number in it. So please, this is an invitation to reach out if you think that it would be helpful to hear from us directly.
this gift. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well, and I'm sure we look forward to a few others. But we absolutely want to have great communication with you. Like you say, we want to hear from you, and we want to be able to speak to you as well. So we'll follow up on that. Thank you.
I feel sorry for the person who has to follow.
So, Mr. Sotile. How you doing tonight?
So, I will show that I know how to be succinct. But in any case, it is a great honor to say thank you to the Board of Ed because, as Brian so put it so well, it is a job that we know, you know, kind of carries that term "thankless" with it that we hear so often. And the roles are many, and the responsibilities are many, and the challenges are many, you know. It's no trip to the grocery store is ever the same after you become an elected member of the school board. So I think we all recognize that and appreciate that. Even if we have to come to a special day to say it, it's important to say it, and we're glad to say that.
I thought your opening, David, was a little good.
So one of the things, as we thought about this year and thought about how we wanted to express our thanks and our appreciation, is to really think a little bit about what the Board of Ed represents. And like I said, there's so many roles, so it was really hard to capture them all. But one of the things that we know that you are, from all of your different appearances and all of your different commitments and all of your different support, is you're one of the biggest boosters our school district has. And we recognize that. And so in recognition of the great many great things that have been happening in our district, not the least of which is the very recent formation of the Irvington Bulldog Booster Club, we thought that we would give you a big hand and tell you that we think you're number one. And so with that said, Ms. Chapnik, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah.
This way, the next time, this way, the next time you're at one of our many sporting events, you can show everybody who's number one. Thank you very much.
Can we use this tonight?
Yes. Thank you. This is hard to go unnoticed. Very cool. Well, thank you very much, David. The Administrators Association would like to invite our friends in from I, Sonal, and Meredith to say a few words as well.
So we didn't really prepare. We're both newbies, so we just wanted to say thank you for your dedication and for being there for us when we need to talk to you. And, yeah, no, same thing. From our organization is similar, except you guys have twice as many meetings and commitments and things to read. So I think from one group of parent volunteers to another, we really appreciate everything that you do and look forward to a really productive year. Thank you.
Why do we have to wait?
Thank you. Lots of good stuff.
So Jen Barnett from the PTSA, if you'd like to.
Last year, I brought my kids with me to the Board of Recognition, and if they were
it every Sunday for basketball where I get beat up pretty badly.
here, they'd be thrilled to see so many of their favorite teachers here. I'm Jen Barnett, and on behalf of the PTSA, want to thank the Board of Education for your commitment to our community and for your partnership.
As a final acknowledgement, you know, I said a few words in the opening, but again,
And as my kids get older and go through the different schools, it's amazing to see all
I want to extend appreciation on behalf of everyone in the school district, certainly
the different experiences that they have. And so thank you to the teachers, since you're here, and thank you all for your commitment
everyone in the district office team, Raina, Carol, who unfortunately couldn't be here
and your time to our community.
tonight, who sends her best, and Elaine as well, and share a token of our gratitude.
And if I knew there was an audience, I would have wrapped these gifts. Because they are t-shirts with the New Irvington logo, and the reason they're not wrapped is because I thought if you needed to swap out a size, I could do that easily. But we also will be handing you the PTSA directories as soon as they're printed, which is in the next week or two. So thank you so much for your partnership and your commitment, and it's great to work with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's so appreciated, and we are so appreciative of our faculty, our administrators, our parents, for all that you do to make this district a wonderful place to be a part of. And we will do our best to, in return, serve you to the best of our abilities. So thank you for coming. We have a really great discussion ahead of us, so if you have a little bit more time, we encourage you to stick around and be a part of it because we love to hear from you as well. And it actually relates to our strategic plan in terms of our discussion related to what rigor looks like in the classroom.
Yeah, so we're actually going to pivot and pause for a second so we can move around and get situated differently. So if we can maybe just take a two-minute break and get reorganized, then we'll see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to talk. Where are you moving to, Maria? Moving over there somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we should all be together.
No, no, no. So we're going to scooch around. So Brian, I don't know if you want to scooch around over to the side somewhere so we can kind of intermingle?
I just wanted to push a chair.
So.
Everybody's got to move because that whole idea is.
We're trying to move around. I'll go over there to that corner. I'll go over there. Hey, you can play the role of, you know, for this performance.
But then you sit where I am.
Where do you want me, Chris?
Hi.
Come over here.
Yeah, I wonder how long this will disappear.
That's it. Between that and rally town. Maria? Are these both yours? Because that way, we're interspersed.
What?
You're supposed to move, you're supposed to be interspersed, Brian.
Yes, so I'm.
He's moving. Somewhere.
Chris is taking them away, I thought.
Yeah, I'm just moving. I'm going to squeeze in between the two of you.
Now I can read your email.
Yeah. Let me go in. You don't want to see them.
You're good. You don't have to move. Don't wave at that.
Hi.
Chose my seat right next to me.
We're supposed to go head-to-head with Dr. Harrison there about the large company.
Oh, are you? Is everything?
We were just up there with the homecoming.
Parroted a monster.
We've had a lot of praise.
Even if it's the kids who are sitting, it doesn't matter.
When they feel loved and respected, they achieve.
So you time this in 40 minutes? No, that's what the objective is. And then I think realistically, to have a target conversation, we should be within every single time. So it gives us a.
When you have a clean-out closet, it's working better.
Look at you at the top.
Yes.
What I left.
Let everybody go.
So. Yes, now for our workshop on rigor. Yeah. So certainly to, maybe to take a second to reboot a little bit. You know, we have a lot of important conversations. And throughout the course of this school year, we started off this year with conversation around goals, and we're going to build to looking to where we're going through the year. And there's a natural sequence to the work and the conversations that we're having this year, and we started with goals. Tonight, we're going to delve into a topic of rigor. And then next week, at the next work session, we're going to talk about assessment. And there's a progression here, and thinking about what our objectives are, thinking about what the work is in our schools. And rigor is one of those complicated words to deal with, and to understand really how it kind of fits into a learning environment. And so we thought it would be valuable for us to have a conversation tonight and dialogue that's going to allow us to arrive at a place where we have a common understanding of rigor. And, you know, I can say throughout my years, we've had conversations in and around student's success, and we've had, turned into dialogue in and around concept of grit, and we touched on rigor a little bit. But rigor has been something that's continued to come up quite a bit, and it's because it's language that we use in the classroom, it's language that we use in our schools. And as educators, we kind of, we get it. And it's not just the word. In many, many ways, it's a way of being and how people go about their life, how people look to push themselves, challenge themselves, or stretched by the environments. So it is much more than just the word, and it's a concept that we're going to work to try to develop a deeper understanding of tonight. In advance of the meeting, we provided the Board of Education with two different items. One was an article by Tony Wagner out of Harvard entitled "Rigor Redefined." And the other was a chart. And the chart provided examples of environments that promote rigor in the educational environment in a classroom. So we tried to provide that as an opportunity to give us some launching points and some common language. And the Board, being the great students that you are, came back with some questions after we distributed the resources. And because there were things that were referenced in there, we just feel like every time we start to take step forward, there's other areas that we have to expand. So it's just not a path forward that we have to reach out and stop with learning along the way. So there was some information shared related to other topics that came up, like Bloom's taxonomy and other resources that are referenced within the context of rigor. So when we think about the conversation that we're going to have tonight, there's a piece to it I want to ask that the Board, certainly the principals that are around the table with us tonight, those in the audience and those at home, to kind of get rid of that traditional definition of rigor. When we think about what rigor is, our minds immediately leap to something being hard. And when we look up a literal definition, the first thing that came up is an act or instance of strictness, severity, or cruelty. So when we think about education, we certainly don't want those words to come into play. When we think about classroom instruction, when we think about the good work that our teachers do on a daily basis, those aren't words that we use to define any aspect of our practice. It's not about harder work. It's not about more work. And it's something that applies at all levels. It just doesn't mean high school. Rigor exists at all levels of education. So to kind of frame it a little bit, there were a couple quotes that stood out from the article that I just want to reference. And in the article, Wagner speaks to his interviews of industry leaders and some of the needs that are out there, and what industry is asking for to help prepare future leaders, the future workforce. And some of those things that stood out, we're talking about innovation, that we needed leadership skills and more collaborative skills, that we needed our students to be more flexible and to have the ability to use a variety of different skills to solve a litany of problems. They need a workforce that has initiative and people with lots of drive and spirit. They want strong communicators, those that possess stronger writing, speaking, and presentation skills. They want folks that can process and analyze large amounts of data and other information. But they don't want to lose sight of the fact that folks need capacity for imagination, creativity, and empathy. So when we, I end with that last one for a reason, because it truly juxtaposes that traditional definition of what rigor is all about. So as we go through our conversation tonight, and Dr. Core is going to lead us through a protocol and a process to have a conversation where everyone around the table is going to have the opportunity to contribute and share thinking, I just want to set the stage by reflecting on that. So with that said, Raina, I'm stepping on your toes, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to have an opportunity, and I know we have some new board members. And I think that one of the things that's worth noting is, a goal of our school district is that we would always love to see that we are moving toward this idea of living as a professional learning community. And over the years, and as you can see tonight, you know, and as many of you know, we have a lot of really good, smart teachers in this district. And it's really easy to get lost and be in your classroom all day and be working with kids and be in your own head and in your own content area or your own developmental level. And as a district, it's our job as administrators to make sure that we're providing opportunity for ongoing dialogue. And a true professional learning community engages in dialogue. And we don't engage in dialogue so that we can convince each other of what we think is right or what we think is wrong. We engage in dialogue so that we can develop a deeper understanding of each other. And so sometimes people will say, oh, you know, the culture's not so great in this particular school, and we should, I used it before, we should go bowling. And, you know, while bowling, it can be a lot of fun, in the end, I think what we've seen over time is the way that we really build culture is through this kind of work and ensuring that, again, while we may not all agree with each other, we all have an understanding and we have a perspective. And through that, we come to a common understanding of what we need as a school district or as an individual school or in an individual classroom, for that matter. So very often in schools, we use protocols. And the reason that we use a protocol for a process like this or for our meetings is because very often, we have very limited time. And so it's easy to end up in a room. If we just put something up there around rigor and just open the conversation to the table, I would probably guarantee that there would be a few of us who would say a lot, some of us who would just sit back and listen, some people who would try to get a word in, but some of us might dominate and not let them get a word in. And so the whole idea of using protocols, and this came out of national reform and the essential schools movement, is that we want to make sure that there's, everybody has a voice and that everybody gets to share their thinking and that it's done respectfully and it's done with a commitment to really listening to each other, as our goal is to just try and understand where each of us feels on a topic or thinks on a topic. So tonight, our topic is rigor. And I think that if we put enough people in a room. the needs that are out there and what industry is asking for to help prepare future leaders, the future workforce. And some of those things that stood out, we're talking about innovation, that we needed leadership skills and more collaborative skills, that we needed our students to be more flexible and to have the ability to use a variety of different skills to solve a litany of problems. They need a workforce that has initiative and people with lots of drive and spirit. They want strong communicators, those that possess stronger writing, speaking, and presentation skills. They want folks that can process and analyze large amounts of data and other information. But they don't want to lose sight of the fact that folks need capacity for imagination, creativity, and empathy. So when we, I end with that last one for a reason because it truly juxtaposes that traditional definition of what rigor is all about. So as we go through our conversation tonight and Dr. Core is gonna lead us through a protocol and a process to have a conversation where everyone around the table is gonna have the opportunity to contribute and share thinking, I just want to set the stage by reflecting on that. So with that said, Raina, I'm stepping on your toes, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to have an opportunity and I know we have some new board members and I think that one of the things that's worth noting is, a goal of our school district is that we would always love to see that we are moving toward this idea of living as a professional learning community. And over the years, and as you can see tonight, you know, and as many of you know, we have a lot of really good, smart teachers in this district. And it's really easy to get lost and be in your classroom all day and be working with kids and be in your own head and in your own content area or your own developmental level. And as a district, it's our job as administrators to make sure that we're providing opportunity for ongoing dialogue. And a true professional learning community engages in dialogue and we don't engage in dialogue so that we can convince each other of what we think is right or what we think is wrong, we engage in dialogue so that we can develop a deeper understanding of each other. And so sometimes people will say, oh, you know, the culture's not so great in this particular school and we shouldn't, I used it before, we should go bowling. And you know, while bowling, it can be a lot of fun, in the end, I think what we've seen over time is the way that we really build culture is through this kind of work and ensuring that again, while we may not all agree with each other, we all have an understanding and we have a perspective and through that, we come to a common understanding of what we need as a school district or as an individual school or in an individual classroom for that matter. So very often in schools, we use protocols. And the reason that we use a protocol for a process like this or for our meetings is because very often, we have very limited time. And so it's easy to end up in a room, if we just put something up there around rigor and just open the conversation to the table, I would probably guarantee that there would be a few of us who would say a lot, some of us who would just sit back and listen, some people who would try to get a word in, but some of us might dominate and not let them get a word in. And so the whole idea of using protocols, and this came out of national reform and the essential schools movement, is that we want to make sure that there's, everybody has a voice and that everybody gets to share their thinking and that it's done respectfully and it's done with a commitment to really listening to each other as our goal is to just try and understand where each of us feels on a topic or thinks on a topic. So tonight, our topic is rigor. And I think that if we put enough people in a room, there may be some commonalities, but we probably would think certain things are more important than others. So I'm gonna pass around a protocol that we're going to use and it's called the four A's text protocol. And I'm going to, and I'm sorry, I should have made extra copies for, there may be a couple of extra copies for our audience. Sorry. So we are going to use a protocol called the four A's. And the purpose of the four A's protocol is to take a text and in this case, our text is the chart, the examples of classroom and what could be described as rigor. So that's the text that, when I refer to text. And we're gonna take this text and in a pretty short period of time, with a lot of us, we are going to unpack this text and just begin to get a sense of where we all feel and what, as we read through these examples, what ran true for us? What was, it seemed important, more important maybe than something else? As Chris suggested, as part of this document, we refer to the habits of mind and Bloom's taxonomy. So this is very layered and complex work, even though it's really just a simple chart. So we don't expect everybody to walk out of here really understanding or thinking deeply about every part of the chart and the examples. What we expect, are we short?
No, we handed one out to the other.
Oh, okay.
They're making copies. Have more if you need that one.
No, I think they're okay.
I think we're okay.
See how nicely they work? See how nicely they're working together?
I'm hoping then that she does the notes and I can just.
Now they don't want it, so now that, I had to break my whole rhythm now. All right. Okay. So, so the four tests, so the four A's text protocol is an opportunity where each person at the table is going to have a voice around a particular part of the test. If we had more time, we would actually look at all four components of the four A's, which is assumption, agree, argue, and aspire to. So I'm gonna walk us through the protocol, purpose, to explore a test deeply in light of one's own values and intentions. And that is really important. This is not an opportunity where we're here as administrators to convince the board of something, nor is it an opportunity for the board to convince the administrators of something. It's an opportunity for us as individuals to really think through our own values and our own beliefs and our own understanding and that obviously, for most of us, is through our, as administrators, through the lens of being in the schools and leading this work and for board members, mostly through the role of parent and knowing your children and your children's experience as well as those others in the community. I'm gonna be the facilitator. So you can do timekeeping and you'll see in the next line, time, no more than three minutes for each participant. So I would just ask everyone to be mindful, if as you take us to the part of the text that you'd like to highlight, I would just ask you to be mindful of time. I'm actually not going to like call you on it unless it gets really bad, but for the most part, we'd want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to share their thinking. The group reads the text silently, which you've done already, so I'm gonna give you a few minutes though to actually just go back into the text in a second. Highlighting and writing notes in the margin or on a sticky note to answer the following four questions. So a modified version of this is that we're not gonna all answer all four of the questions, but what I would hope is that you continue to think about this and possibly we will revisit it at some point, but for tonight, we are going to ask you to decide on which one of the A's, as you read this, is it assumption, agree, or argue? I've pulled out what parts of the text do you want to aspire to because we can have that conversation in tonight in two different ways. One is, I know as we work through and toward the end, our building administrators are going to share examples of rigor and what rigor sometimes can sound or look like in the classroom. And I am, I'm sorry, everybody else left, but I have to say, like, looking here at the, at Amy and Christina and Susan, it's like joyful because like, there are so many opportunities in all three of your classrooms where you do, you push kids every single day and so thank you for staying. And so, so I'm happy our building principals as well as, I don't know, maybe they'll want to share, just like where, like what does rigor look like and feel like in a classroom? Because we are working toward that every single day. So in thinking about which one of the A's you want to comment on, I want to touch on the first one, assumptions, what assumptions does the author of the text hold? That's a hard one for people sometimes, right? And I see, right? It's like, what does that mean? So I'm gonna give you an example of what that might mean and I'm gonna guess that that might not be where you, where everybody jumps to go. So an assumption might mean, if I'm reading, I'm just gonna read the first one, to identify, develop, and nurture the growth and understanding of habits of mind. Here's the assumption. The assumption is that these teachers in this particular classroom know the habits of mind. So that's an assumption that's made in the text because you can't have a classroom where they're using habits of mind if the teacher doesn't either, A, believe in those habits of mind as being key and important, but also have a deep understanding. So an assumption would be something that you can see or you're inferring from the text that even though it's not there, has to be in place in order for that to actually exist. So that's what's meant by an assumption. What do you agree with and then what do you want to argue? So those two obviously are pretty, they're a little bit more at face value. So as you're reading, and this may be because of your own experiences in your own, in your own lives growing up, profession, your own experiences with your children, but as you read an example, was there a particular example that you want to highlight for the group to say, this felt important, this is something I agree with, or I don't even think that is rigor? So let's, you know, let's hear your thinking about why you would argue that maybe that's not rigor. So again, you're gonna decide, assumption, agree, or argue. We're each going to do that, so we're gonna actually just go around and we don't have to go in order, I'm happy for people to jump in when they feel ready. And each person at the table is going to have a chance to just share one piece from the text that they feel that they would like to highlight for the group. And through this process, we're building our understanding of each other because you're identifying or we're identifying for each other, what feels important, what do we value? When you decide that you're ready to share, we're going to ask you to just direct all of us to the chart and I, in looking at this, I wish I had numbered it, but if you would just at least direct us to the box that you're referring to, because in any good protocol, the people at the table, the participants are reading along. When you decide to share, you share by starting by actually reading out loud or aloud, I always wonder about that, reading aloud the text that you would like to highlight for the group. After we whip around, we are going to then open up the conversation for a short, really more like a ten-minute open conversation for where we can add something that you felt wasn't added or didn't get surfaced as part of the process. Through that time, I'm gonna ask everybody to just be sort of respectful of a voice and number of times that you've spoken and making sure that we're making room for other people to share their thinking as well. So with that, I guess, any questions? Okay. So we're gonna take about four or five minutes?
And just to say, is that we're looking through the chart for the A's?
You're killing me. We're gonna take four or five minutes and you're going to read through the chart and highlight, if you already have something, highlight, reread it again. If you don't, this would be a time for you to jot something. Remember, you're selecting one item from the chart and you're linking it to assumption, agree, or argue. Okay. Any, have enough time? Okay. I will open the protocol. Does anybody who would like to start? Again, just a reminder, please take us to the line, the box and the chart that you're reading from and which part of the chart or which letter or number within that chart.
I'll start. I'll start with an agree. Is that right?
So what?
With an agree. Am I supposed to?
You can pick whichever one of the three you want.
I'm gonna start with an agree.
Thank you.
Start off on that.
And then start with what?
An agree.
Instead of an assumption or an argument, I'm going to agree.
It's agreeable.
You were speaking another language, I'm sorry.
I am, being the four A's. Very bowel-esque.
Okay. So David, just direct us.
So I'm gonna agree with, in the fourth box down, employees advance in critical and creative processes. I'd like to specifically agree with to create and evaluate learning tasks that challenge students to demonstrate fluency, elaboration, flexibility, and originality. That's all I'm supposed to do, right?
Say, no, and now you have, you like, you have to three minutes.
Three minutes elaborate. So I agree with that at the core of this conversation in general, just because I'm a firm believer that when we think about rigor, you know, like Dr. Harrison stated, it's got a lot, you know, you throw it out and it sticks to the wall in a lot of different ways and David, I know you could probably relate to what I'm about to say because I think we learned it together at the same time a bunch of years back, is that the idea of rigor for me is in what we ask students to do on a daily basis, you know, hence the Bloom's taxonomy and, you know, we worked with something called web's depth of knowledge, which is another way to measure. This really strikes home for me because it's about not only evaluating, creating these tasks for students or providing these tasks for students, but also evaluating them on using whatever measure we use to understand how we challenge students. And it's not just challenging their fluency, which is very common. So I think it going beyond just fluency in terms of elaboration, flexibility, originality in their thinking is really the deeper part of that because it says to me and, you know, that when we give a student a task to complete, that it allows that student to really stretch their thinking, you know, which comes back to the general sort of definition that we were talking about at the beginning.
Great. Thank you. Doesn't have to be connected right. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six boxes, or two from the bottom. Embraces teachers and students as risk takers. To create classroom environments that celebrate responsible risk-taking, where students experience both successes and failures, and view this as a normal part of learning and building for future successes. So I think it is agree slash aspire. I think it's hard, sorry. I think that, I want to say I agree because it exists in terms of sort of teachers who are moving in a direction or interested in something and feeling supported to take risks and try things and then therefore provide opportunities for their students to take risks, but I think as a system, yet it's an aspire. I think that as a, I can say as a school and as a school district, I think we're sort of teetering on the idea of, and know that there's such value in providing these opportunities and celebrating failures as much as we do successes. But I think we're just moving in that direction. I would say that we teach into all of the habits of mind and all of the sort of thinking for kids to be, you know, self-aware and to know their processes as learners, but I think maybe I can, I don't know if I'm not supposed to connect back to what Dave said, but that designing the, what the kids do is a place of, to aspire in terms of making it sort of a regular occurrence that there are risk takers and creative thinkers and problem solvers.
Okay, Raina, I'll jump in. I would say obviously, a lot of these things resonated and I'm not an educator, but I will tell you, when I think of rigor, box.
Can we just take us to where?
Yeah, we say for box five is what spoke to me, constructs investigative and open-ended learning processes. Because for rigor, when I think of it, it's what is taught and how is it taught? And so when I think of develop differentiated learning tasks, providing multiple points of entry for all students to explore new investigations, experience more sophisticated levels of knowledge and create new essential questions, to me, that's what seems exciting. That's what, when I think of rigor, I think of what does rigorous teaching look like? Why is, what makes it rigorous? Why is it rigorous for the student who's in the class? Just calling it rigorous, just calling it, and I only think as Dave Cohen knows, I only think of high school these days, but just calling it an AP class or calling it an accelerated class doesn't make it rigorous. So for me, I would think it boils down to differentiated learning and what the teacher is teaching and what makes the program rigorous. And I would think it means different things to different kids in that class.
Thank you.
There's a connection that I would make to that as well. In the last box on the front of the homepage, utilizes effectively existing knowledge and creates new knowledge. And under letter B there, to identify, nurture, improve, and assess specific dis. And under letter B there, to identify, nurture, improve, and assess specific dispositions and behaviors that support students in exploring while remaining open to continuous learning in order to create new knowledge. You know, when I think about rigor, I think about a quote that I've heard, and appropriated in some cases, in that rigor is ultimately when the cognitive load, or the cognitive heavy lifting, is being done by students. And I actualize that by thinking that it's when students ultimately have to give you more as a teacher than you gave them. And that comes from the ability to take their prior knowledge, to take their experiences, and make connections that you didn't make for them. But that are the product of their good thinking, and of their, you know, time spent really beginning to construct a new body of knowledge, or an expanded body of knowledge, based upon the learning experiences that you provide. So when you say that, Deb, I think about that as the step in order, that's necessary in order to utilize that existing knowledge and creating.
I'll go next. So one to the third box. So engages consistently in sophisticated investigations of materials, text, interactive technologies, and learning activities, in particular the, and C in that, to develop strong interdisciplinary courses, units of study to reflect 21st century thinking is more robust and complex than 20th century models of distributing and receiving information. Since I was taught in the 20th century, I guess I have to learn something new. But for me, you know, this resonated, because there's certain skills that, like writing, that is, cuts across everything, but it's also learning how to write for your audience and for what the topic is. I mean, I see it in my work all the time, there's a difference between, you know, informational writing versus more creative writing. You know, if you're having to write a science lab report, that's one skill, and there's a certain style and technique of that writing, but with benefits from your ELA instruction, as well as your scientific principles. So looking at each course is not just, it's not just science, it's not just math, it's not just English, but there is a linkage between that. And for me, you know, that resonated with me in terms of rigor.
I'll go next. A lot of these resonated with me, but I kind of feel, the one that spoke the most to me is the second one on the second page. To me, this is taking it to the beginning. I think that rigor, people have different definitions of rigor, you know, people often refer to, you know, AP classes, honors classes. I don't. Whether you are a high achieving student, an average student, or below average student, to me, it starts with your classroom and your teacher. And if you're in, and if you're in an environment that you're willing, that a teacher create, to me, a teacher creating an environment that pushes kids and gets you out of your comfort zone, and makes you feel comfortable, that makes you, as a student, go that extra step, and try a little harder, and I just, I think this is just, to me, it's the beginning. And I've seen it, I've seen it with my own kids, and I've seen it with other friends' children, that when a teacher creates an environment that a student is, feels comfortable in, whether they make mistakes, whether they're right or wrong, but they're willing to take those risks, I think that a student can just fly. And that is the beginning for me. And everything else is the additional steps, but this is, to me, the beginning, and so important.
Just a point of clarity, Maria, when you're speaking to that, and are you speaking to sets no predetermined limits?
Yes.
And then it sounded like you were speaking to item A?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Was I supposed to specify that?
I think we all.
Did I not follow the instructions? Sorry.
So I'll go next, and you know, somewhat to piggyback off of what you're saying, Maria. I am also on the second page, and in the first box develops and applies deep understanding of significant concepts, generalizations, and essential questions to problem finding and problem solving. And I'm looking specifically at B. And, you know, as I talk through this, I would imagine for many of you, you know, you've heard me kind of talk about this consistently around some of my philosophies at the high school level, and it reads to provide opportunities for students to move from a knowledge perspective, covering the materials, to a conceptual perspective, uncovering of ideas, concepts, and generalizations, and to understand the synergy between these two different types of knowledge. And I think it's become such a growing focal point at the high school, you know, I think of the math work that we've been doing, and, you know, this whole notion of wanting to teach into conceptual understanding versus computational accuracy. But it's a challenge, and I think, you know, it speaks, so ultimately, I agree, but similar to Joyce, I think it's constant aspire. You know, it's where you constantly can be elevating, we can be elevating, you know, what we do and what I do, so to say. So Maria, you talked about, you know, being able to create that environment and create those challenges. And what's interesting is, you know, how our students respond to those challenges. And sometimes it's with excitement and desire, and sometimes it's, you know, often with an awkwardness. So, you know, what we found is, as we're making movement in many of our subject areas towards teaching into concepts and getting students to be thinking, at times, some of their pushback is, just tell me how to give you the right answers back. So some of it is almost teaching how to think, as well as challenging their brains and challenging their problem solving. So there's a multitude of things that are going on at the same time, you know, it reminds me a little bit of also what Joyce was talking about. So, you know, ultimately, I think the more that we can get students out of the purity of the content, and the content is so important, at the high school level especially, you know, it's where things become tremendously rich, but it's what they do with that content, for me, where the rubber hits the road. So ultimately, that's what defines rigor in so many ways.
So I'll go next. I agree so much of this, my notes are all over the place, so it's hard to pick one, but I'm now narrowing it down to what's left. So I'm gonna point you to the second box on the first page. Builds upon interests, strengths, and personal goals. And really looking at C, to provide opportunities for students to explore their emotional response to topics, ideas, concepts, and procedures. When I think about rigor at the early elementary level, certainly, we can look at it from many lenses. But for me in particular, in the work that we do at Dowsley, and to foster rigor, you have to have a sense of growth mindset. And how do we really instill in children for the first time that what their emotional response to learning is? And developing lifelong learners, and the understanding that growth mindset means you may not be there, but you're not there yet. And for the first time, we're introducing five-year-olds to words like thinking flexibly, and how to be a problem solver, and just trying to capture that wonder for them when everything is new learning. And for me, it's one of the most important, most granular levels of learning, is to love learning. And you can have rigor and enjoy learning, but it's those opportunities that we give them to push themselves into those places that might feel a little hard, and to know that it's okay, that they'll get there, and speaks to so many other things that you've all mentioned, their depth of knowledge, and what we're asking them to do with their learning, and to how we differentiate and find those entry points for each student, so that we can speak to their strengths and interests, but we have to push them in what we know they need to be lifelong learners.
I'll jump in. I was debating whether to try and go before you or after you, but I wanted to probably connect it. I could choose any number, but to pick out a different one, I'll take the second one from the bottom on the first page. Embraces teachers and students as risk takers. C, to identify, develop, and assess social skills for working in collaborative work teams. So I kind of want to pick up where Deb left off, which is that, you know, there's assumptions, both in the article we read, and I was testing it in this document that we were looking at, about who does this speak to? And you reference high school students and other students. And so as I was going through it, I was trying to put it in the framework of, you know, thinking through the different ages that students are in Dowsley, or Main Street School, or middle school, and does this work for them? And that piece about working together in a collaborative work team is a really challenging one, even, you know, most recently with my children leaving middle school, you know, hearing about the different group work that they do, and to think about the five-year-olds. So I guess, you know, not being an educator, there's nothing in here that said, I don't know if it's the right term, developmentally appropriate, I mean, my term, my layperson's term is, there's nothing in here that says meet students where they're at. So that's what I was looking for in here.
Maura?
I guess I can step in since.
Who's gonna break first?
Obviously, I've got, I came in wanting to learn as much as I could about how this applied specifically to the earlier years, since that's those are the years that I'm most concerned about right now. And it seemed like there were so many natural connections for people who already know how to think, maybe have to improve the way they think, as opposed to. So I, I guess I'm going to go with the second, the second bullet as well, the second section, and say that I, I love the idea of D, providing opportunities for students to explore their interests in new materials, ideas, concepts, and procedures, thus motivating them to engage in the learning process. But I tend to be a little concerned where the rubber hits the road, about how maybe children in the early years can be on the edge, and really make a very strong judgment, I'm not good at this, very early. And, you know, you hear it, you hear it a lot, when homework is being done, and the kids are small, it's just hard, I want to walk away. And so that, that seems like the place where I can enter this material, but I mean, it's encouraging when I read it here, but at 5:00 PM, not so much.
I don't have anything brilliant to say, but I will say that the thing, the one that popped out for me, as, and I put my employer hat on, was 4B, which was to identify specific non-negotiable lifelong thinking skills and processes, so that all students demonstrate masters, mastery through high-level cognitive thinking, e.g., strategic planning, creating new products, decision-making, resolving discrepancies, clarifying ambiguity, ambiguities, conducting research to test theories and hypotheses, and ameliorating polarity. So as I've thought about some of the hires over the years, that, and I think, you know, Joyce highlighted the risk-taking, and I think, I forget who else highlighted risk-taking. I think that's one of the most challenging things to instill in students, and I think it's particularly hard in a high-performing district like Westchester, one in Westchester, where the expectation of parents is always excellence, and doing well, and coming home with, you know, straight A's. But I think that so much is learned from the risk-taking, and from problem solving, and from being given tasks. And I've even had discussions with my husband about how, in the old days, we used to have apprenticeships, and we would learn to do things, and in a way, the learning was sort of problem-solving, if it was, you know, putting together an engine, or putting together a Lego building, or whatever it was. It was a hands-on problem-solving, and strategic planning, and creative thinking, and taking risks, and not having any concerns over being wrong, because wrong could just be fixed, right? You just take it apart and put it back together. So I think, you know, for me, I don't know if it's rigor per se, again, I'm not sure what defines rigor, but I think that helping kids achieve that next level of being able to problem solve is a critical component.
I was patiently waiting and watching every one that I picked be taken by one of your folks around the table. You know, I kind of jumped around a number of times, and obviously, having, you know, made a nice selection, and provided and resolved many benefits to the use of this document as a tool to lead the discussion. But the one item that jumped out, and right away, was immediately stolen by Deb, and it's in the second area, and Deb, Maranella, I'm sorry. So the item C in the second section. And when I read upon this, and it's something that I totally agree with, and like Joyce said before, there's aspects of this that are completely aspirational, too, that it's something that you have a belief in, and you know other people have ownership of this, but there's ways of developing. So, you know, that idea of the emotional connection, and the power of emotion, as it's associated to learning, really stood out to me. And then, I think it was Maura, identified with the item above it, and B. So to, you know, since I was so strongly connected with this whole component of builds upon interest, strengths, and personal goals, D stood out to me as well. That idea of fostering and really bolstering students' own interest and passion is something that I think we have to continue to really latch on to, and to continue to find more opportunities for students to be able to personalize their learning experiences through items that they're passionate about, and talents that they have. You know, we can always step back and think about, you know, what if I hadn't done this? Or what if I did do that? Let's take those ifs out, and just create a world of possibilities, where kids are able to personalize their learning, and develop some degree of agency, where they own and actually provide some more individualized direction, and where they're going, their studies, and what their product that they're learning in.
I think I'm gonna go to the last box, which is creates lifelong learners, who think risk capable, and independent, reflection, self-evaluation, and reasoning. And I'll go with C. To provide support for students through teacher modeling to developing a willingness and openness in receiving feedback in order to become a lifelong learner. As I thought about this, and I listened to each of you highlight different aspects of it, you know, I couldn't help but picture, like, real classrooms, classrooms where this kind of work goes on every day, and where there are, it's like, a piece of it here, or a piece of it there, and, you know, and so for me, what rings true for me on this, or what I agree with in terms of really, what a rigorous environment looks like, is it's steeped in feedback. And I think that it's one of the hardest things to do in classrooms. I think it's hard to do in classrooms where you have 22 kids, and I think it's very challenging to do when you have 108 kids, or 120 kids. But I think that rigorous learning comes from that personalization, that stems from feedback, and really being able to engage with people, teachers with students, adults with adults, to look at, what are we doing, how are we doing it, how are we doing, how are we doing that well, how do we grow, and setting those goals. And so for me, when I think about our classrooms, and I think of what we aspire to, I think we aspire to finding ways to really have those one-on-one conversations with kids, and I think it's one of our greatest challenges, because of time constraints and all other things. things. But in the end, I think, I do believe where I see it, and where I see teachers who really know their students, and really engage with their students as learners, you see the difference. And I guess what I would say is, for me, how I recognize it, is through high expectations. And so that was the word that I was actually looking for in this document, because I think that, I believe that all of this is only valued if a teacher sets high expectations for learners, for what that learning is gonna look like. So, for me, rigor is steeped in feedback and expectation. So, at this point, I just want to step back and give anybody a chance to actually build on something that they heard, or something else that they were thinking that relates to assumption, agree, or argue.
I wanted to touch on something that Deb had highlighted, which is how well a teacher knows the student coming into their classroom, and their ability to vary the rigor based on the student's ability. And just, you know, wondering what we do to support that across the spectrum. Because I think, you know, to your point, expectations and feedback are really dependent on how well I know you as an individual, and as an individual learner, and what I should expect of you might be very different from what I expect of Dave, or what I expect of Maura. How do we measure and support that, so that teachers can be effective along all the levels?
To add to what you just said, two things that, what you said earlier, Raina, about high expectations, and I'm not sure, I felt it came from maybe over here, about kids being allowed to fail. I think nowadays, pressure from parents and teachers alike, I don't feel like kids are allowed to fail. And I think it's so important for kids to fail. You're not great at everything, and that's okay. And I feel like, I don't know, that message, you know, high expectations, what does that look like? As you just said, it looks different for different kids. Some kids are, you know, high flyers, some kids are not. And, but everyone, I don't care what type of student you are, everyone has to fail. It's so important. And nowadays, with the way, kids aren't allowed to fail anymore. And I don't think it's a school thing, I think it also comes from the home. And I think it's important, and, you know, Maura, when you spoke about, you know, kids feeling, not feeling good about themselves because they can't do it, that breaks my heart. And I feel like, I don't know, somehow that movement has, you know, there's so much expectation from teachers, from parents, from schools, from everybody, and that's kind of lost.
I was gonna go to the same place, and, you know, Catherine, you had brought it up, and I knew Joyce, she first brought it up as well. I think this failure concept is such an important one. But I think it also goes back to what Raina was saying with high expectations. Because for me, it's about process. It's like, what's our process for being able to create safe ways for failure? You know, failure can look like, I take a test at the end of the unit, and I get a 50 on it, and it feels like failure. Or failure can be that you're problem-solving in class, and you're asked to come up with strategies to overcome it, or there's a safe way to get feedback, whether it's from peers, whether it's self-reflection, whether it's from the teacher, so that it's part of your learning process. I think our ability to create more of that, and to see that as a norm within our system, for students, for parents, for teachers, for all of us to really embrace that, speaks to ultimately what I think would be a really rigorous process, and help in that concept.
You know, I mean, I wanted to add to that, too, because I didn't necessarily think of this as, with the program work of rigor, but I think we're all touching on this idea of failure. And it's important, I mean, in all sorts of things. You don't succeed initially, but learning how to fail multiple times and then figure it out makes you a better learner, makes you a stronger thinker. And, you know, I think, as David was saying, we've lost sight of that, in terms of letting kids fail, and what does that look like? I mean, I see now, with Homer's assignment, I go home and say, you don't do it in 20 minutes, stop, which I think is a nice way to fail. You know, you couldn't figure it out in a sufficient amount of time, stop. Don't drive yourself crazy, and spend an hour beating yourself up, but maybe next time you'll figure out your strategies and work towards it. So, you know, I think, you know, this whole idea of how to fail, and being supportive and failing is important, because I see it now with, you know, people who are brand-new lawyers, who have never been told that they don't do something well. And, you know, these people have never failed. And they'll give you something, and you'll look at them and say, this isn't good, and we need to fix this. And you can see them almost wanting to cry. And it's, you know, it's amazing, see, that they've never been told in their life that something they did wasn't good. And, you know, learning to deal with that is really important.
Right, because that shouldn't be the first time they hear it.
I'm just gonna moderate, though, so I'm just gonna go, so Joyce tried to say something, I'm gonna say Joyce and then David.
I see so many things. This idea of, Maura, what you said about students that are not good at this. So it just makes me, with the failure conversation, you know, it makes me think about the opportunities that we design for students, and what are the expectations, like Raina said, for what experience students have in the classroom. So, you were saying something earlier that made me think of this, that not every child is good at the same thing. And so when we design things the same way every time, the same kids shine. And so you can be rigorous in lots of different ways, and provide different opportunities, so different kids can shine in different components of the work. And so to your point, like I said, but to your point about the collaboration, I do believe you can teach in to collaboration. And I do think that when you provide opportunities for students, and for many, at different ages, it's stepping out of their comfort zone to work with someone, and being able to negotiate, not just having my idea be the right idea or the only idea. It's really upon us, you know, to think about what are the experiences, I'll go back to my original first comment, the experiences that we provide that allow for students to fail and also succeed, you know, with the feedback along the way.
Yeah, I find myself in a similar position to Joyce, I want to respond to a bunch of folks, I made a couple of notes on it. You know, a couple of things that both, I'll start off by saying, I can't stand the word failure, I prefer productive struggle, especially in my case.
P.S.
Productive struggle. Yeah, well, because that's what it is, it's a struggle to get to where you want to go, right? But David, you said something, you talked about process, like going from A to B, and it made me think about something that this document doesn't really get at, or I think it might hint around, is the idea that rigor isn't, you know, not every experience a child has academically needs to be difficult, hard, thought-provoking. It has to be scaffolded, right? And so, like, when I think about that, you know, when I say that, what I mean is, you know, at the beginning of any arc of learning, right, it starts off, like, I'm giving you some things that you need to be able to recall, and then you can use that knowledge to build to the next level, based on the Moon's article, right? I'm thinking about how that works over the course of not only a lesson, but over the course of a week, and a unit, et cetera, not just with the questions that we ask, but with the text that we read, and the math problems that we see. So that, the idea of process for me, is that rigor is a process, right? Like, it starts here and it gets to here. And if we don't do that kind of work, that's when we get the, what are you talking about, teacher, kind of moments, when you don't do that. And it made me think also about, one thing that it doesn't talk about in here, but maybe does dance around a little bit, is how do we actually measure what that looks like? You know, when we look at, and by that I mean, yeah, I know we get weekly spelling quizzes, right? And so we understand that that's really lives at the bottom of that rigor matrix, right? That idea that it's really just recall, I gave you 10 words, you studied those 10 words, you give me back those 10 words. Yes, that's important, and we need to do that work, but do we just stay there? And as administrators, and parents even, how do we look at that work and determine how challenged our child is, you know, in terms of their thought process, and, you know, exercising that grit that we've worked so hard at over at least my five or six years, you know, going through the schools? How do we measure it? How do we look at it? How do we determine, as a principal, doing observations, wow, that's rigorous, or that's building towards rigor, or we're gonna get there, or if it's not happening, how do I coach into that and build it? And what do we use to identify that?
That's my biggest pushback as well, is that when you say, what is something here that we would argue against? I found this academic rigor chart challenging, difficult to work with, because at the end of the day, everything I've read on rigor is what is taught, how's it taught, how's it assessed? I mean, how do you assess rigor, and what are the assessment methods? How do you measure rigor? And is it, do you measure it in the classroom? Do you measure it after the child leaves the classroom? Do we measure it four years down the road, because they picked up something the way they were supposed to the first year? So my pushback on this is, that didn't come into play, and I didn't understand, you know, it's all well and good to say, this is how I define rigor, and this is what resonates. But if we can't measure it, then I'm not sure that's enough. And one of the other things I will say is that I also agree with the risk-taking aspect to rigor, but that, to me, as a non-educator, seems the most difficult to assess and measure. And that would concern me if that was our definition.
So I think, you know, I'll take a little bit of a stab at the idea of measuring rigor, as challenging a notion as that is. But I think it comes down to something that's been talked about here on a couple of occasions, and that is the type of task that we ask the students to perform. Ultimately, when we see tasks that require students to go beyond the body of knowledge, or even skill, or to combine skills in a way that is new and different, to put them to use in unfamiliar situations, that's the ultimate evidence of understanding, that's the ultimate evidence of transfer, which is a goal that we talk about a lot. And that's the evidence of students thinking in a rigorous fashion, because they're ultimately making more from what they've been given than some of the parts. You know, I think about that a lot, and, you know, just like everyone else, I've heard so many great thoughts come out across the way here tonight. And so I'll try to combine a little bit of it into saying this. I don't think that high expectations are only for high performers, right? And I think that's a very important thing to say. And I don't think anyone has said that, I'm just verbalizing. You know, ultimately, rigor and high expectations are for every child. And I, well, I am wholeheartedly in agreement with the notion that not every kid can have the same exact expectation layered on them at the same time. Every child can make progress towards, you know, high expectations that are appropriate for that child along a continuum. I think it's one of the arguments that so many of us have with what we feel is a one-size-fits-all method of assessment that's put into place by external forces. You know, so I think the work that is, that's out there for us is this idea of looking at, how can we create really rich tasks that ask students to engage in deep thinking, that put themselves in situations that are uncomfortable, that are by that nature, risk-taking situations, and ultimately ask them to perform in a way that they take what it is that they have, and make those connections, and produce something that's new and different and unfamiliar. And that's ultimately how we assess the level of rigor that we achieve in our classroom.
So I'm just gonna build on David. I think, I am with you, I think it would be a mistake for us to sit here and try and measure rigor. I don't think rigor is what we should be measuring. I think the reason for these classroom examples is we're saying, if this is what's going on in our classrooms, then we are providing, then maybe we're providing rigorous environments for our students, and therefore rigorous learning. So I think we should be measuring learning, not rigor. I think as a school district, and certainly as administrators, we do have the joy of walking in and out of classrooms and seeing those challenging, rigorous environments. Amy Conzie, you're sitting here, I'm thinking of your, those number lines that now line the B-wing?
Yeah.
B-wing. You know, when I look at the kind of tasks that you're asking kids to do, and to me, that's what we want to be looking at, and that's what we're measuring. And so Amy's looking and measuring individual students and their success in her classroom, and shifting and adjusting when that student isn't getting it at the level that they want. So I see Christina's nodding, Susan's, right, because that's what rigor looks like. So I think as an administration and as a board, I would encourage us not to try to measure rigor, but that we should all have clarity of what rigor looks like, so that we're having a common conversation when our building administrators and other leaders share the work, and share the assessment of students. But it's not rigor we're assessing. Rigor is what our teachers provide in the classroom, it's the learning in those tasks that David referred to, I think, is what we're looking to make.
Right, but I think at the administrative level, evaluating what's going on in the classroom, rigor is certainly one of the things that's been looked at. How's the lesson being?
Right, right.
I agree, I don't think it's something that you can't measure a student's rigor, but you can measure the rigor of the curriculum that's being provided to them, and, you know, are they being asked to call on multiple skills in various lessons, as opposed to, okay, you know, today, here's a good way to answer this question, versus, you know, a more robust presentation.
I think that's a good point, Brian. And, you know, I think that's exactly been the work of our district. When, you know, I think of our UVD work, you know, Chris had an opportunity to sit in while I was working with a teacher today, and as we were talking through a lesson, the ability to start talking about making distinctions around the four learning goals. And, you know, when a teacher is talking to me about wanting to implement certain tasks and processes in the classroom, I'm able to say, make distinctions, so, you know, are you looking to target knowledge, skill, meaning-making, or transfer at this point in time? I think the ability to speak into that is the ability to start talking about the rigor. So, you know, and it goes back to the feedback, and maybe those low stakes weigh for failure. So within this same lesson, the teacher's talking to me, it's a language class, and obviously, we're having a focus on speaking and listening. So, talking about a process whereby students will work in pairs, but then pairs will be paired up with another pair. So while one team is talking to one another, the other is going to give feedback to individual students around the ways that they get assessed on their speaking skills. And this is a process by which now students are very comfortable, and they're learning to be comfortable with giving each other feedback, that raises the stakes. But it also speaks to who they are and where they are. So, you know, within this same upper-level Spanish class, we have students that are going into it as anywhere from novice high to intermediate mid, and those distinctions start to become very narrow, and they sound wide. But they're comfortable in this sharing, and they're opening up in ways that, you know, we typically haven't seen in our language classes before.
I want to push back on this notion a little bit, to find my productively, because what Brian's point was, right, like, if we, measuring rigor in students, I agree, right, with your saying, but when teachers have an obligation, as administrators have the obligation, to ensure that children, and we all said it because it's in this document, to provide our children with the most rich learning experiences possible, right? I think we all agree there. So what makes that determination that is a rich learning? I'm not talking about Irvington in general, I'm talking in general, right? I just want to make sure that's preface. What, how do we make that determination? What's rich, what's not rich? Who makes that determination? What's used to make that determination, right? You know, when, as a principal, when my teachers send assignments home, and I look at them, and they're just worksheets that they photocopied off an internet site, or whatever, and they barely read it, didn't fact-check it, is that an opportunity for a rich exercise for my child? How do I, am I, as a principal, measuring what my teachers are sending home? Am I looking at that, or is it a normed experience for my teachers, that this is the expectation that you're going home with this? And, you know, what does that task look like, and how did you choose that task? You know, if I assign during, if my teachers are assigning during the day, okay, group one, I'm differentiating, you're gonna do questions one through five. Maura, your group is gonna do questions six through 10 out of the math textbook. David, your group is gonna do 11 through 15. You're struggling, how are you gonna even get past number six? How do I know? If I vetted all of those problems, if I looked at them, I've done all those problems, how are they asked? These are really measurable items, and they're really vital. We saw it in the transition to the Common Core, that whole struggle that we experienced with materials and curricula. So I, you know, I do push that we should be able to measure, you know, this idea that our children are being provided with really rich experience. And for a lot of cases, I see that happening, you know.
So the way that we measure that, I guess I would say, is the work of our administrators and the work of us as leaders. So when we're in classrooms and we're observing, that's what we're observing for. So we've set out our theory of action and our goals, and we've named what's important. And I think for so many of us, as we read these samples, we do see lots of classrooms where there's some evidence of it. where there's some evidence of it. Is it, is every single one there? Well, no, it's not even appropriate for every single one of those to be there. It depends on the class, it depends on the level, it depends on the age of students. There's a lot of variables. I think, though, what we would say, and what we would hope that you would say as well, is when you read this, that this is what you wish for, for your child, as well as every other child in Irvington. That this is what we expect kids to walk into each day, and the kind of instruction that we look to provide. And Dave said, you know, it speaks back to our UVDs, and it speaks back to this whole idea of our curriculum in this district of thinking. And we have high levels of expectation around thinking. And so I guess what I would say is, yeah, Dave, I would say, we are measuring it, that's what observation and evaluation is all about. But I guess what I would say is, there's not a rigor meter, it's actually looking to say, how are students performing? What level, what kind of tasks are we giving students to do? And are they performing at a level that we think is appropriate for that individual student, and that individual student's growth at the highest levels possible? And that, so the, the evidence is in teaching and learning. The evidence isn't in the word rigor, but it's important for us to have a common understanding of when we think of rigor, what's the image in your head? Is your, the image in your head the same as the image in our heads, being, we're charged with going out into the classrooms, you're charged with being the Board of Education and leading this work of this district? So our goal tonight is to have this conversation, so that we could determine, how closely aligned are we in understanding what we think rigor is? Do we have a common understanding of it, or are we, do we have some dissonance? Do we not necessarily agree? It doesn't sound like from this conversation that we, that we don't agree, actually. I think everyone was able to lift it out. So the question goes back to those, you know, the, the examples and the work that happens in our classrooms. And again, that's measured through our observation and evaluation process, as well as just our daily interaction. I don't wanna make it only about observation, to be honest with you.
Daily work.
Experiences.
Yeah, it's the daily work, you know. I think one of the comments that I made in the very beginning, that, you know, rigor is a way to be, right? And it's just not a single instance. And we went through, and I took throughout this conversation, like five and a half pages of notes, writing down the key terms, and, and I'll share some of them in a second, because I, I wanna try to condense that after this into some common thinking for all of us. And, but what was amazing is, I think that as you saw the conversation mature, how naturally everyone began to connect with each other, and it went beyond the point that, that, well, someone already took all the other answers, so I, I wanna agree with somebody, but there were common themes. And the thinking started to align, and a, a lot of the thinking to build upon each other's thoughts. So we went through, and just some of the things that I highlighted in, in the notes, themes around risk-taking. Celebrating failure, where we had a conversation that went around and around about that, and there was a timely article in the New York Times related to failure, that started to make its rounds today with some folks. But that idea of celebrating failure actually came up in, by Joyce, in, in the, in the second comment of the evening. And to see how that matured with us. The idea of habits of mind differentiated, and I like how Deb Hargrave said this, differentiated learning, so we're, again, student-focused rather than just differentiated instruction. I like that David then transferred the thinking into thinking about the lifting in the classroom, right? The cognitive load, and kids doing, giving more than they receive. So think about how, you know, learning goals, and later on, Dave talked about transfer, right? And how that associates with our learning goals. Brian then went on to talk about 21st century learning skills, and classroom environment was a key piece to fostering all of this. The connection with emotional aspects of learning, collaboration. And Michael made a comment that then, I think, was touched on multiple times, but wasn't named specifically, and talking about the developmental, developmental appropriateness of learning at times. Because I think Dave Graeber then commented, made a comment that linked to that, right? That not everything's gotta be hard, not everything's always gotta be a stretch, there's foundational learning that we have to provide kids, that may not touch on all of these areas, right? So as I think when we step back and we look at this, and, now, that's just like a page and a half of my notes, that there's lots of overlap and lots of alignment in what we believe. But at the same time, I think if we're going to believe in having a rigorous learning environment, just, it's inherently aspirational. That, because it's always gonna shift, because we always have different groups of kids, we always have different learning needs that are gonna present us. And heaven knows that we're constantly preparing for a future that's evolving every second, right? There's the old adage we used to say, that, you know, somebody will have so many jobs throughout their life, and now we talk about the number of careers that people are going to have. And then you're gonna have to reinvent yourself professionally. So we have to equip our kids through these experiences to have the foundation and the courage and the habits to be able to be successful in that environment.
I just wanna throw in one thing, though, is that, you know, we're, we're having this conversation in the boardroom and not in the classroom, or in, in the, in the buildings. So the fact that we're having the conversation here, I think, I just wanna solidly, you know, underline that, that, you know, we've heard in past roundtables about the great work happening in the classroom, the rich information that, that teachers have. We've heard about, just now, about the, the, the power of your administrative observations in classrooms. We are looking for that same ability. I think sometimes we can feel disconnected from what's happening in the classroom. And so when we have these discussions, I think, we already know this is a theme for this fall, we wanna be able to, to understand what you're seeing, and what the faculty are seeing in the classroom, because we wanna support, we wanna support your ability to do the good work you're doing. And so the better that we are able to understand that, the better I think that we can support you. So I just would ask, as you go forward from this discussion, that that's what I think a number of us as board members are looking for. How can we best support you? And we need, we need that same ability to, to define and understand and, and assess, you know, the work that's being done, so that we can, can be good board members.
And we end with aspiration, all of that. So I would like to say some, some next steps, that I wanna kinda condense this a little bit of processes, and there's something that takes our shared thoughts, and really puts it into a more concise vision, and then circulate that. And we know that there's, you said Michael, you referenced that work going back to schools and classrooms, but this isn't something that's just a conversation that happens here, right? We talk about developing belief systems, and, and so, you know, the work that happens here needs to transfer as well. So we're just not talking about kids in the classroom. So as a, to make sure the team, we step back and think about, what does this mean to us? And what do next steps look like? For using this to begin to partner with our, our faculty and staff to bring it to fruition. I guess in, in close, I just wanna thank the boards for being good supports. I know that it's, it's a challenge sometimes to sit within a protocol, but it allows us to have focused conversation, and allows, you know, everyone to make sure that we're able to all contribute to the conversation. Most especially, I wanna thank my principal colleagues.
Thank you.
Because your contributions were outstanding and valuable tonight. And of course, Raina, for being our facilitator this evening, really like we produced the dialogue.
Raina, you get to do this every meeting now.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, really.
Great. So certainly, the administrators are, take a step away. We have only a few minutes left, so it's your call, if we need to just formulate.
A minute for everybody, stand up, walk away.
Good night.
Very good, thank you.
Bye, Susan.
Susan, thanks for hanging in.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
It's totally, very.
Do you get board comment on this, or no?
Get your own, man.
Do you get public comment, or is it a door session?
Don't.
Is there interest in public comment?
I just wanted to know what the next steps were.
So, so we, the question is, what are the next steps?
Next steps. We're gonna look to condense notes into like one inclusive, I don't wanna say statement, but document, that would allow us to be able to work with this moving forward, and to have that level of transfer, that, you know, something we can look back on as something, as an artifact of our understanding and our shared learning, but also something to inform the work that moves forward in, in schools as well.
I guess, so the one thing that I'd like to just highlight and connect, and I know you probably all know this, because you've memorized our, our theory of action. But our theory of action, if you go back and you reread it, it's about rigorous learning environments, and then it, it fleshes out what that looks like. And so I guess I would also ask, is as the year goes on, and the principals present, or they share examples, I think what they're sharing is examples of, of rigor, and examples of rigorous learning environments. And I would say that our goal, as a district, is to ensure that that's everywhere, right? So we're not just sharing a sample of like, oh, that happens to be happening in that one classroom, but rather, it's a reflection of the practice, and what you're, what you see in your children's classrooms, as well as what we hear is going on in classrooms, and obviously, what the administrators see. So I guess what I would say is that this is a journey that we've been on, and I think this was a really helpful conversation to have with all of you, and for us to continue to build our common understanding and beliefs about what that is. And maybe as the year goes on, and principals share at the end of year, we can even, you know, connect it more explicitly, too. So how does, so if this is what we said it is, what are you saying was rigorous about this? How do we know? So?
Yeah, I think that's part, I think, as a board, that's the thing that we're all struggling with. I think, you know, in the dialogue, also, I think we have a fairly good agreement on what rigor looks like in the classroom. Now the question is, how do we know that that's actually making it to the classroom and it's looking that way? Because, you know, obviously, we're not in the classroom, and, so I think, goes back to Michael Corner, yeah. What can you help us to see how we go from point A to point B?
And what, what, you know, you think as this year goes on, and you think we continue these types of dialogues, what'll be interesting, too, is where you make the connections in your own kids' learning. So you can see how your kids are being stretched or exposed to things in different ways, and where, there's those times where, where I referenced Dave and, and Michael, that time where it's, you know, that foundational knowledge, and, and then where that times where, where a kid is taking control of learning and taking it in a new direction. So I, I think that there's gonna be opportunities on, on both sides. And I think Raina's suggestion is, is critical, that I think we, we start to use this as a part of our language in going forward. I think where we've been in, in the last five-plus years is, we're kinda defining who we are, and this is another step in that process. And, and it's, you know, I think it's important to make the connections with the broader body work that's occurring.
Can I add one thing? I, I did, we, we throw this word "measure" around a lot.
Yeah.
And I wanna just make very clear that it's, it's a positive word, it's not a negative word. I think it gets heard often as a negative word. It's not a negative word. You, the, the way you responded to the pushback was exactly, that is measurement, right? Like, so that, that, the way you describe measurement, that is measurement, right? Through, through the observation process, using the, the Daniel's, or looking at 3B, you know, having the principals go in and say, you know, how did you make, like, that's all measurement, right?
I think it was received, though.
Mr. Board President, I think there may be another comment if that was a genuine offer of support.
Okay.
The mic's right there.
The question is, if it's short, I'll repeat it. If it's longer, you should use the mic.
You have to speak in Spanish.
I didn't see Spanish, it's a French.
So just, yes. And this is related to the topic, or?
Sure.
All right. Just to be consistent, I should've said it before, the first question is that it's, we, in public comment, ask that you share your name.
Yep. I've, I've got this down now, I got three minutes, I'm gonna go. I'm Erin Bernstein, I'm the parent of a second grader at Dowslane. Everyone knows this already, because now it's not the first rodeo. I will say, just to connect things, my son is in Mr. Levine's class, and it's amazing, because he sends home homework that is not those worksheets. And don't get me wrong, I have nights where I think, dear God, I wish I could just give him a worksheet to do. But it's interactive, it's constructive, it promotes critical thinking, it promotes dialogue with his parents, it's awesome. And tonight, we had to rush through it a little bit, but it's, you have teachers that do that, and he really could be a model for how homework can be productive and interactive with parents. It's great. Oh, actually, the most important thing, I didn't know it was Board Recognition Week, so you guys do an awesome job. I have no swag for you, I have a thank you, and that's about it. I'm eating into my three minutes. I will say, though, as we read through this, it was about global learning, global citizens, global economies. The high school teacher talked about language class. We all know that early foreign language programs help kids to be productive and good learners in other areas as well. I won't get into all the facts. With that, we know I'm here because we're advocating, my team, who unfortunately is not here tonight, advocating for early foreign language programs in the schools. We recognize it's gonna take time, I appreciate your ear. The thing I wanna point out is, page 11 in the presentation that you were sent two weeks ago, talks about some alternative ways to implement language into the schools. I know it can't be done next year with a full-blown curriculum, so I'm just gonna highlight them for you, because I know it was a long presentation, you might not have had a chance to read it. So some of our ideas are implementing before and after-school programs within Dowslane and Main Street, Main Street School, pursuing potentially grants with the PTSA and the IEF, using the computer lab to introduce language. I know my son, last year, would sit with the computer and he'd play games, you know, maybe learning, interacting, and hearing a foreign language would be helpful in another way, just to sort of integrate that into the classroom, not an expensive thing to do. Spanish or French clubs in the early grades. Having Hispanic Heritage Month in the early, in the elementary schools. Integrating, I think the middle school has like a forum, and I'll call Pen Pal, maybe that's dating me, but doing something like that, maybe, again, it's during the computer lab, where kids are interacting with other international students, whether it's through Google Hangouts, I think we use Google as our platform. I've learned a lot here. And another area was, God, I can't read my writing, having foreign professionals come in, maybe, and speak to the class. So having people come in with international backgrounds to talk to the class, and bringing in those cultural experiences in that context to the younger students, and then just engaging with other school districts that have other demographics, and kind of bringing that together into the classrooms. We have, you know, we, we are in sort of an isolated area, right, demographically in Irvington, so being exposed to other areas, other neighborhoods, other kids with different cultures.
Erin, I'm gonna ask you to make a concluding statement, please.
A what?
To wrap it up.
Oh, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have consent agenda, I believe.
Yes, just a few items.
Surprisingly so, but, you know, we got some great people to hire here. So can I get a motion to accept our consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, Maria and Brian.
Hold on, I, I have to write this, because Raina's going to sign.
Yep. And, and if we don't have any questions, I will ask all in favor.
Aye.